Welcome to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council. Who would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the word session of October 4th, 2021. Any corrections to those? Oh, that's right, no. Skip that. We must first have a motion to excuse Housewoman Janutus. By Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Miesak?
Yes.
Or Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Now, we can do minutes of the word session. Seeing no corrections, motion for acceptance. By Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Upstayed.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of October 4th, 2021. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Fluharty? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Upstayed.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
We do have a special presentation tonight. We tried for several weeks to get this done, but I didn't want it to not be said here at a public meeting. And we want to honor the memory of Nancy Luchowski, who was on our Civil Service Commission for over 35 years. Selfless position that, for 35 years, to do something. There was no pay in it. It was all for the love of the city and what she did. And just remarkable that somebody would hang on for that long. And I know she touched me personally because at the beginning of her job, it was when I was promoted, she was involved with doing the promotional and after this, well, she touched so many lives here at Bedford. And we have a proclamation that I'm going to read in a minute. She touched so many people outside of just Bedford. Just a remarkable lady. And I just wanted to take this moment and just do a small thank you to her. And let me come forward and read this. John, I would ask you to come up here, but if you're comfortable there, or if you want to come up, that's up to you. If you're comfortable there, yeah, that's fine. Let me just read this. Whereas Nancy Gergi Luchowski served on the City of Bedford's Civil Service Commission for over 36 years, and whereas Nancy lived in Bedford for 64 years, she married her husband, John, and they had four children. She had four siblings and four grandchildren. I see a theme there, a theme with four. Whereas Nancy was a graduate of John Adams High School and was employed as a bookkeeper and purchaser at Fairmont Tool and Fortune Company, a Kiowa County Board of Elections poll worker, and a presiding judge for Bedford. And whereas Nancy was a member of the Bedford Township Bicentennial Commission, the French Bartlett BFW Post 1082, Ladies Auxiliary, St. Pius the 10th, Our Lady of Hope Parishes, and a blood donor for the American Red Cross. And whereas Nancy served under four mayors, five city managers, and concluding her service in the position of committee chair. Her number of hires include 24 police officers, 10 fire medics, 22 police promotions, and 11 fire promotions. And whereas Nancy was dedicated school mom at Ellwood Elementary, Moody and Heska Junior High, and Bedford High School, she was also an exceptional bowler, earning many league championships and high series honors in 1958 and 1962. And she won Cleveland's iBeat the Champ title in 1968. And whereas Nancy was active, lifelong engaged citizen, upholding the principles of democracy for our Kiowa County, the state of Ohio, and the United States of America. Now therefore, I stand, Coche, Mayor of the City of Bedford, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Bedford, to hereby remember Nancy Gergi Luchowski for her years of service in the Civil Service Commission. In witness thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Bedford to be affixed hereto on this 11th day of October, 2021. Do you want to say a few words? Is there somebody in the family? Do you have a spokesperson?
Denise.
Denise. Please come up here, please, so they can hear you, because we do have people at home watching, not the kitchen.
First, I'll say, hi, Nance. My mother loved Bedford from the moment that she began to call us home. My dad was kind enough to bring her here. And she really considered her role on the Civil Service Commission to be the thing she is most proud of accomplishing in her life after her family. I mean, she really appreciates everything that our first responders do. She appreciated the trust that the council repeatedly demonstrated in her. And my mother was just an advocate from the word go to make sure that Bedford's hiring practices were fair and equitable, that we found the right and best candidates for the commission, excuse me, for the fires and police departments. She loved to celebrate their accomplishments and their hires. She loved participating in their careers because she would just follow them and encourage them along the way the entire time. And so with the number of police and fire chiefs also that have passed through, my mother had her own relationship with them and, you know, and would always inquire what's going on. I think my mother was ecstatic when Bedford finally was able to hire a female police officer. She was absolutely stinging around for that. So my mother recently died, and so this is pretty significant for us, for this honor for my mother, and we really appreciate it. And so it's not only for Bedford that she appreciated everything the fire and police did. When my parents went traveling across the United States, if there was a firehouse or a police station, my mother could stop and visit. She absolutely did and would always share with them what was going on back in Bedford, Ohio. So she was an ambassador for our safety forces as well as for our city. So thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor Coche. Frank, my mother loved working with you and everyone on the commission. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate it very much, on behalf of my family.
Thank you. There was just so much more we could talk about outside the city. We just kind of focused on her life here with us. And I'm sure Chief Duber would attest that she was a very good civil service commissioner and helped us all along the way. And I'm going to ask Frank Gambosi to say a few words. He was the Secretary of the Civil Service Commission.
Thanks, Mayor. I had the privilege of working with Nancy for 30 years, you know, out of that 35 years. And in that time, she served, you know, 35 years with our Bedford Civil Service. She was totally committed to working with this commission and making decisions that were best for the city. She was very dedicated, always available at our meetings. That was very important because many times I'd call me and go, you know, 24-hour notice, I got to have a meeting tomorrow. And Nancy would always be there. I could always count on her to help with being there all the time. It was just wonderful to have a person that had that much dedication to the job. And it's very important in that position to be able to move quick on these appointments. So she's always helped with our hiring achievements, and she's definitely partially responsible for many of the firefighters and police officers that we currently have working here today. We will all miss her not being on our commission, and she had a great pleasant personality that was always present when we had her meetings, and I really appreciated that. She was a great watchdog, and I remember her famous saying, "Now, Frank, you know." And when she said that, she was always saying, she's verifying my work at the same time. So she's always saying, "Well, you know." And I'd say, "Well, either it would be an answer of, 'Yeah, I do,' or, 'Oh, no, I didn't think about that, Nancy, you know, you're right on that.'" So she always let us know politely, and we corrected all our things accordingly. She was a friend of the city and her commission and to myself. And I thank Nancy for all her devoted work for our community and truly deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, your end.
Well, I know that Nancy is here with us tonight. Mary Burke is guarding her chair. And I can tell you one thing, when I look out at the audience every meeting and see her face and for her ready to jump out that chair because she's writing things down and get up to this room to ask Frank a question or any of us a question, she was right there. A few other things about Nancy. We, myself and my family and the Luchowski family, I read it close, we're an extended family. After we started talking about life and who you knew and who you didn't know, my father-in-law and her brother, John, worked on the same railroad together for many years. So that, when I said to her, I said, "Well, you know, your brother was at our wedding, and I didn't even know you at that time." She says, "Yeah, but you knew, you got to know my sister-in-law," which was my brother's wife. And I said, "Fortunately, yes, because we, like I say, family was family." She did take pride in doing the right thing, not only for our Civil Service Board, Dean, but to make sure that the officers and firefighters, HOs, do the most professional and best job they can do for their position with our city. I think we have a very good and helpful service department with both fire and the police division. And I am proud of Nancy to take the time and do all that work to make sure we did have the right people to fill her request of doing it honestly, faithfully, and according to the laws and regulations of the state of Ohio. Now, I dispensed that oath several times, but when you think about it after reading it, she did a lot of work for us, and I say, "Thank you, Nancy." Nancy was also associated with the Board of Elections, like I was just talking about, and I just skipped it over. She spent many elections, whether general, you know, midterm or whatever, 5:00 in the morning, we're at the election booth, and Nancy's right there, making sure the workers were all prepared, they do a good job for those that had to come and pass their ballot for the right thing. She did this tirelessly, tirelessly. We were both associated with the Board of Elections because of the former mayor of the City of Bedford, Don Grossinboff. He volunteered us, and he really got a good volunteer with maybe both of us for many years to do this service to the people. And he started the Bedford Democratic Club, Democratic Club, but now it's an organization. And she is classified as the dean of the Democratic Party, emeritus, because she put in over 40 years of dedication to the Democratic Party for the right way to do the right thing for your city and your town and your country. Followed up by many reunions with the U.S. Navy because of her husband, all over the United States. And we sure did like when Nancy won a vacation because, like her daughter said, she'd go to the fire department, she'd go to the police department, and when we would meet after they'd get back, I either got a magnet or a T-shirt or a patch. So that's how things started there with that, with the family with that. But as of today, Nancy, I know you're over there, your plate is almost filled, but I'll tell you what, we didn't have that last cup of coffee yet because you had my last cup at my house, but I'm going to have a cup of coffee with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else like to say something? Sandy?
I was just, I miss her face in the audience, and it just got a little tickled when I was at the funeral, saw a basket of goodies. And I can remember having to look away when I'd see her in the, in the audience because she'd be having a candy wrapper, and she'd be looking at me and wrapping, very quietly. So there was a private little joke that went back and forth with the candy wrapper. So I just, I miss her face. I know Mary misses her dear friend out there. It's an empty slot out there, and I, heart goes out to the family. She was just a lovely person, and I spoke to Jeff Asbury and a couple of others. We've, we've got some plans to do something special for her, so she'll never be forgotten. That's for sure. And we appreciated everything she did for our safety services.
I got to know her well in the, with the Democratic Club. I, you know, won, what, four years ago, so I started getting in the Democratic Club about eight years ago. And she was one of the first ones I got to meet and realized the past of hers and her history of what she did for this city and for the elections, like Paula said. She's, you know, I think we have an award for her, if it's named after her, Paula, if I'm not correct or not, but there's, she's done a lot. And when I hear all the history of what she's done, I was amazed that I got a chance to actually meet this woman. And of course, Mary and I grew up together a long time ago, so she always sat with Mary and 22 of them, I know they were probably saying some things out there, but I knew, I knew when she was up, and like you guys said, when she started saying something, you better sit back and listen, because she's going to let you know about it. But no, she was a great woman, and it's sad, and I'm sorry for family. Prayers to you guys for your loss. She was a great woman. Do you have any words? You have to know her.
I'm just sorry to the family. My condolences go out to you, you guys. She sounded like a really wonderful woman, and I wish I would have known her, but I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you. John?
Same here. I didn't work with her that much, but, you know, I know she was very active and thanked you and her and for allowing you to do so, and she'll be missed.
Just the same, yeah, no, same thing. I remember her often, you know, I lived with my grandparents for a while on Wondell, and she would always tell me, "I know your grandmother." And people would miss that, go up the street, and I'd, "That was me." And she was just fantastic. And a smile that would make the room up. We'll never forget her. And obvious, her deepest condolences, very, very special.
Jeff?
I didn't know Nancy all that well, but I met her probably about four and a half years ago on the campaign trail. And she used to really enjoy talking to her down at the party in Parks. I may have known this guy for, I don't know, 50 years or so, somewhere around there from the old Bedford pool back in the day. My deepest condolences, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Huh?
I've known Nancy for quite a while. Anybody that's involved in politics in Bedford knew Nancy. There was no question about that. I know what she went through, someone on the Civil Service Commission because she was on it after my father was on it. So I've known her through the Democratic Club. She was a former chairman of the Bedford Walton Hills Democratic Club, along with Rose Grossinboff. I remember her. And of course, Don was the one that started it all many, many years ago. So she was an outstanding person. She never seemed to say no to anybody for anything that you'd ask her for. So she will definitely be missed, and it's, it's a shame to see a lot of the old clan from Bedford that has been around for as long as I can remember slowly disappearing. So she'll be one of those, though, that isn't forgotten.
Thank you. I think it's the least we could do. Like I say, 36, 7 years, whatever it was, dedication, just truly amazing and certainly touched all of us up here. We can pause for a moment. If, I'll invite you guys, you can stay for the whole meeting if you want. If you need to get Dad home, you're welcome to do that. I wish we could have done this sooner, but it just didn't work as we planned, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Ed?
Thank you very much. Really, I'm not much for making speeches, but I appreciate all of the people. And I know Nancy, the one who is in the Nancy, love of Bedford. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. We'll take a pause if you...
Nancy told us we have to stay in moderate for a while.
Well, thanks for having me. And with that, we have to get back to business. Let's give Council a round of applause. Thank you. I don't want to go on and do any work. But I guess we have to. Under old business, ordinance number 9899-21.
An ordinance replacing ordinance number 7780-05 relating to water rates in our codified ordinance 911.01E and declaring an emergency.
And this is, I'll need a suspension of rules. By Miesak, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Fluharty, second by Spinks.
I'll explain the next three ordinances right now. With the water rates, we do not have an increase this year. We're just putting the ordinance out to let people know that rates will not change. We will have a rate increase on the sanitary, expecting the improvements that we have to make. That will be 4% this year. And we have raised the amount for senior discounts, $34,000... Maybe Jennifer could help me out. $34,694 is what to do about this for household income. So we asked Council to pass these this evening. We're on third reading, and I just asked for that this evening.
Questions seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordnance number 9900-21.
There's an ordinance, as he said, amending section 911.03 entitled Rate Reduction for Disabled Persons and Senior Citizens and declaring an emergency.
And you have motion for suspension. Spinks, second by Fluharty. Quick, call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Miesak. Frank explained these. Has to do with the discounts for seniors and disabled. That's a good thing. Quick, call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9901-21.
There's an ordinance amending, ordinance number 9817-20 concerning sewer rates, our codified ordinance, section 913.02, reflecting, I believe, an increase, as Mr. Gambosi said, 4%. 4% increase.
Motion for suspension by Asbury, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. And we covered that. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. We are currently working on a grant through Kiowa County. It's a 50/50 preventative maintenance grant for our service department. If you recall, we were successful the last couple of years. We've done projects like crack ceiling, Rocksey Road, we've done Columbus Road. This past year, we used the funds to do the improvements on Egbert Road, concrete repairs. Right now, we're looking at the possibility of applying for rebuilding numerous catch basins through town. Normally, we do this in-house. However, if we're able to apply for that use and if we are successful, it will not only allow us to perform more, but we'll be contracting it out, and it will free up our staff to do other projects. So that grant is due on the 28th of October, and we'll be submitting for that. As I previously mentioned, Dominion East Ohio's contractor is going through town doing the restoration work on the Washington Woodrow area for the gas line project. They did have a request to start the next phase, which is up on Archer Road. They wanted to start this month. However, we have respectfully requested that that not take place until the spring. So they will not be starting that until 2022. And as we get closer, we'll provide more information on that. Number of questions, when leaf pickup is going to start? We normally say that will start when the leaves start falling. So they're just starting to come down. We'll most likely have a crew out next week to start, and then as they start falling more, we'll increase the crews. Please get that out to the tree lawn, but do not, try not to put that in the street, specifically if you have a catch basin outside of your home. Obviously, that'll block that and cause further issues. But our crews will be out and will be going and canvassing the whole town for that. Just a couple of events coming up. We have the rec department is putting on a Halloween event on the 30th from 10 to 12 down at the Ellwood Center. It'll be outside. And then obviously Trick or Treat will be on the 31st from 6 to 8. Just a friendly reminder, try to refrain from parking in the streets during Trick or Treat, kids trying to cross the street, you know, running out in front of a parked car, just some safety precautions. And then there's a number of other programs, Halloween, October programs and beyond, that the Parks and Rec Department is offering. If you go on our website or follow them on social media, you can get further information on that. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director?
Well, thank you. No report tonight. Just want to thank everybody for coming and wish you well.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director?
Just one comment in regards to, we're looking at refunding our 2013 debt issue. And in doing so, we're looking to save, cash flow savings of about $263,000. We may try to do a little better than that, but that present value at about $193,000. Looking to refund just like you would on your house payments and your mortgage. We're looking to refund what we've issued back in two thousand and thirteen. And I believe we'll do very well with our ratings of the city. And in our situation right now, we'll be bidding that out shortly with Council's approval this evening. And I ask them favorably on the ordinance addressing the sale of the bonds. That's the end of the report. End of your person.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty. Mike, when's the last day for the chipper? Is it November?
I know the chipper ended in October.
Okay, so we're not sending them out at all?
No, most of, is there a certain area?
I don't have any, but I know always somebody comes up with it their last minute. Just wanted to know if we.
And right now, it's, it's not out because they'll be bringing out all the leaves.
Okay. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to throw that at you then. I just want to let everybody know Union Street's moving right along. We're getting, both sides starting to get a coat of paving. They're getting there and hanging there, people on Union Street. Did we, did we get any more notices on the bridge with the construction, with the state coming out to look at that?
Not yet. Not yet. I know they will be doing some repair work underneath. A lot of the drainage has has broken over the years. They'll be addressing that. But as far as the fencing and the locks and all that, I do not have a date yet on that. But we have a request out to them.
All right, end of report. Thank you. This is Miesak.
It's okay.
Miesak, yeah.
I, I do part of my report when I talk about my friend Nancy. But you know what? We still have a couple of other items that we have to finish out. When people put their trash out and not on the designated day before or the day of, but a week to ten days ahead of time? How about the auxiliary leaving them a tag instead of the regular officer on duty that doesn't see it?
Well, when we get notice, actually, we make a phone call and we put the resident or the owner of the property on notice. And then our policy is they get, they get the notice and the tag that comes through service. And then if it's not removed or cleaned up within twenty-four hours, the police will go out and issue a citation.
Okay, because there's two homes on Turney Road. The second and third went past. The big one would be. You like bushes as their pants in the front. Left their garbage out from last Wednesday. It's still there a week later. And Northern has been done. I don't believe so. I didn't get any calls, but it's unlikely. And I don't even mean for my streets and for, it's all over town that people just don't care. And I think something more should be done about it.
Well, I'll check that address, but if I recall, I think it wasn't picked up by Kimball because they're putting out construction debris.
I know.
And it was flagged, but I, I will, I will check that.
Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Asbury.
All right, so Mr. City Manager stole sixty percent of my bullet points tonight. So it's going to be a brief one. The Bedford Historical Society Spirit Walk is this coming weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I believe they have three walks on Saturday, one, three and five P.M. Two on Sunday, one and three P.M. For more information and to reserve your tickets, you can call four four oh two three two zero seven nine six. What's going over? That one's going over?
Sorry.
That's all right. Just a reminder, Tuesday over November second, it's time to vote again. So I believe I checked the Board of Elections website. We were back to three voting locations. Boards one, three, five and six are all at Ellenwood. Ward two is at High School and Ward four is at Glendale. So the polls open at six-thirty, close at seven-thirty. Do your civic duty, make a good informed decision and go vote. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right. I got a couple of things here. Can we, in our next water department, notice put out that we need to refrain from parking on rubbish day on our dead-end streets? Kimball on my street last week had a hell of a time. He actually drove up on the tree lawn trying to get around parked cars. But they can't grab the cans either because the parked cars are in the way. Mine, there's no cul-de-sac at the end, so he has to back out. And that means they're doing it twice because the recycle truck has to do the same thing. So have some respect for your neighbors because parking on the street on rubbish day, which in my case is on Wednesday, really ties up the area. And Kimball will leave the can in the middle of the street because they won't get back out and push it back out on the tree lawn. Fortunately, two of the people who did the parking on the street last week pulled all the cans in that were in the middle of the street. But the same thing's going to happen here when we do leaf collection. Your leaf collection can't be done either if you're parked on the street. And if it's not your front tree lawn that's getting missed, it's your neighbors. And you're not going to make too many friends with your neighbors if you park a car in front of their house and they can't get the leaves picked up either. So this is, especially this time of year, is one of those that stay off the street if you can. For one, it gets dark very early, too. And, you know, parking is not a permanent extension of your driveway. It's a temporary overflow only. And that's how it should be. Use your driveway. That's what it's there for. The other thing is, Jeff mentioned November second is Election Day. I don't know how many people in this town realize it, but you're electing three new school board members. That school board that you're going to be electing is probably going to have to make a decision in the next two years. Probably the biggest decision the school board has had to make in decades. And that happens to be as to what to do with the facilities here in Bedford. It's a big issue. The State of Ohio basically has somewhat mandated certain classroom styles, designs, school building internals. It's very difficult if you've got a building that was built prior to sixty, actually probably prior to eighty, to make or meet those standards. They won't give any money whatsoever to remodel your building. However, they will give you money to build new. So the school board in the election this time is going to have a big burden to shoulder. And I don't even know if most of them even realize that either. But it's going to be an issue that's coming up in the next couple of years. And they're going to have to make that big decision. So stay informed as to who your candidates are. There are five of them. All three incumbents are not running. So there will be three new, new members on that school board. So let's hope we get people elected that will do the right thing. Another quick question for Mike, and I've brought this up before and nothing seems to ever get done. But the house on the corner of Berwin and Talbot, that place has been a mess for a decade. It's still a mess. Nobody's done a darn thing to it. It's behind the apartment buildings on Northfield Road. I'm sure the building's burned and everybody's well aware of it. We need to get that thing moving along because it's an eyesore. So if nothing else, it's also a safety hazard. So we have a lot of school kids from high school that go through that area, too. And we need to clean that corner up. If you can get to it, it would be very much appreciated. And of course, the end of the month, the thirty-first is Halloween. It's good to see how many people, the younger people that have moved into town here in the last year, how they were starting, they're decorating again like it used to be. Twenty years ago, we had a lot of houses used to decorate. And then it's sort of slacked off, but this year it is decorating again. So I won't feel like I'm the only person on my street that decorates. Because all the new people have decorated again, too. So be careful on Halloween night. There's kids running everywhere. If you can stay off the streets, definitely stay off the streets and have a good time and give the little kiddies a little treat if you can. And if not, make sure your lights are off so that they can skip your house because you don't want them running up to your house and getting very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening. As Jeff said, Spirit Walk, the Bedford Historical Society, is this Saturday and Sunday. The only times available, we have a couple of shows that's already sold out. Saturday, the one and three is the only thing available. Sunday, the one is three, one and three is the only thing available on Sunday. So that's good. We're selling out fast. It's twenty-five dollars per person or forty dollars for a couple. And if you're interested, you might want to get those tickets as soon as possible. Jeff gave you the number. And then also at the Church of Nazarain, my church, Saturday, the twenty-third, from two to four, we will be hosting a trunk or treat. So doing it before dark, everybody decorates their, their cars and stuff. I'll be doing a Cookie Monster theme this year. No, I'm not baking a bunch of cookies. I've been giving out candy, but it's pretty cool. Everybody does their cars, you know, family-friendly, not scary or anything. We have a lot of kids. We usually have about two, three hundred kids that come through. We decided to do it the Saturday before Halloween. Also, too, Mike, or we, I know we're still moving the speed signs around. Talking to one of my residents today on Tudor, and I've noticed it, too. I have turned it in. There's a car resident that lives at the end that comes lying down Tudor. And we do have a couple of residents that keep their old grandkids during the day and stuff. So I know they're doing some work on that street today. So at least that slowed them down with our city trucks out there. But the speeding is still just crazy. And it's just, you know, I always complain about it being on grand, but it's on the smaller streets, too. It's, and those are dead end. That's a dead end street. Used to never have that problem and now it's just, it's, it's, it's crazy. I noticed the last couple, the last week, that our guys have been out repainting the stripes in front of the stop signs. And I sit there at my window, which I'm not home very much, very often. But I was sitting there the other day when they painted mine in front of my stop sign and they cut the orange cones out. Well, it was like, that was a challenge. So they weren't even attempted to stop. They were seeing how fast they could go past the orange cone. And there was almost a collision between someone coming down Grand and someone coming off a canyon. And I noticed it again today in one of the other streets, same thing. They put the orange cone. And I'm fearful for the guys that are out there, our city guys, that are out there doing the painting and stuff. It's just, it's, it's, it's kind of like with, with the, the trash and stuff. I am very proud that I am seeing more and more families. I kind of did a little sticker reward system with my kids on a couple of streets in the Greencroft area. We don't have too many little kids in the Grand and Willard anymore. But I have a group of kids, there's about ten of them, that live on Dewhurst. And they're so proud of themselves. So they had to show me the trash that they picked up. So they went out Wednesday after trash day and they got their old bags. Their parents bought little things, little gloves and stuff, so. And they were very, very proud. And one little boy, he's seven years old, same your name. He goes, Miss Amy, I don't even want a sticker for this. He said, I'm just so proud. I'm saving the earth. So that just makes me proud. And kids, they mimic, they see what we do and that they, we lead by example. And I saw a couple of people I don't know walking down Center Road and they had their trash bag and they had one of the trash picked up. So it is working and I'm still going to challenge all of the other council people. Get out and do it. I've had a couple of people say, well, why do you do this every day, three times a day? That's not really your job. Well, it's my city. It's my ward. It's my, this is my residence. This is my neighbor. It is my responsibility to keep our city clean. So if everybody would just, just challenge everybody to, you know, I know it's not your trash and this is the number one thing that I'm picking up. And that's a scary thing. And this is a small one, the Patron bottles. So that means if I'm picking these up, it means someone is drinking and driving. And that is a pet peeve of mine. Had a deer in front of mine that was killed by a joint driver. So this is very, very, it's just every time I see one of these, I just cringe. Of course, I've got a friend that makes RDA level, but still, I don't know what we can do about it. But most of them are down on the end of Willard by a bar. So meaning they're drinking where they're going. And it's, it's like every day. The only day that I don't do it is usually on Tuesday because the bar's closed on Monday. I noticed there's a few over by the other bar that's off the, it's on Broadway. And that's mainly beer cans, beer cans and, you know. And it's, it's just, it's a shame. And then the food containers. And what breaks my heart about the food containers is most of them are, are filled with food. And I know by delivering meals on Wells and by working food banks and cooking and delivering food for needy people, they just irked me that there's people so wasteful. You know, I'd see a big container of spaghetti that could have fed, you know, a family of eight. And they're just throwing it out their window. It's just, but I appreciate the people that are getting out and they're helping out to make Bedford a clean, but it's everywhere, everywhere you go. Traveling the interstate, bags and bags of trash. Every, it's not just our city. And it's just, I don't know what we do about it. I can continue to send emails to our governor. There has to be something that Ohio can do. Like I said, it's everywhere. So just the speeding, the trash and stuff. Also, tonight, we started our first budget hearing, which will be the next several Mondays. Council doesn't have a life because it'll be up here at five, five-thirty every Monday for the next Don's laughing and smiling. Yeah, this is our life for the next couple of months. And there's a little bit of misunderstanding exactly what council does for us, the budget. Not one single one of us, being council, me, that by ourselves manages the budget by ourselves. Council doesn't do that. We have great, great department heads. Tonight was economic development. And it was so nice to have heard, to hear what Jennifer has been doing. These department heads go out, they get grants. They're the ones that work on the budget. Yes, we hear it. We vote on it. We have a half on it. But not one single one of us council people does the budget by ourselves. It's like everything else that we do up here, we do as a group. We vote on it. Takes four votes. Not one of us has the power to do anything by ourselves. Have a good group up here, but not one of us does anything by ourselves. So if you hear that out, that, that someone's going to manage the budget on their own, that's not true. End of report.
Thank you. One correction, Don. There's six people running for the school board.
Oh, is there six?
Yeah, three guys, three ladies.
Oh, I missed one. Sorry. They, you know what it was? They weren't at the. The forum, yes.
Anywho, there's a lot of them, so choose wisely.
Yes.
All right, let's get on with more business. Ordinance number, ordinance number ninety-nine oh seven dash twenty-one.
Which is an ordinance allowing our employees to participate in, in, in insurance plan premium contribution on a pre-tax basis for the calendar year twenty-twenty-two through Health Equity Wage Works and declaring an emergency.
You have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call a roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Saunders, second by Miesak.
Mayor, this is our deferral of our hospitalization premiums that the employees pay. It's in their union contract, so we're just providing by that by creating a, they call it POP plan, a premium-only plan, which allows us to defer the payments that the employees are making from their payroll checks.
And this does not cost the city anything, or?
It's a fee of two hundred dollars to pay for them.
Thank you. Any questions? Call a roll, please. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9908-21.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 9657-18, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with GPD Group to continue engineering services for the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
That's our wish to put this on first reading. I have a motion for such by Asbury, second by Mizek. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Same.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9909-21.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $3,355,000 for the purpose of paying costs of refunding at a lower interest cost certain of the city's outstanding various debts. Purpose improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2013, dated May 15th, specifically 2013, and declaring an emergency.
And a motion for suspension, Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Fluharty, second by Spinks.
Real quick, Jennifer, myself, Bob, council, the underwriters, we all analyzed this 2013 issue and 2014, but we found a beneficial only in the 2013 issue to refund that and to have savings on that, as I mentioned earlier. And the council passed that this evening, so we go forward with that refunding.
Thank you. And you mentioned our assistant finance director, Jennifer. Thank you for being here. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9910-21.
Amending ordinance number 9857-21, authorizing the approval of a change order for additional engineering fees that weren't anticipated for the Union Street project and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Asbury, second by Mizek.
I'll take it, Mayor.
Okay.
As everybody knows, Union Street's getting done. Our engineering firm was responsible for all the design documents. Cuyahoga County is responsible for all the construction and administration and inspection when it comes to the roadway. What we did was, we applied for a grant, we were awarded $320,000 to do various sewer improvements along Union while that roadway was opened up, being that we did the waterline last year. And we, our response was, the city, 100% for those sewer repairs. So when the county is there and the county awarded the contract to the company, they are going to be relying on GPD to assist in the construction issues that originate from those sewer repairs. Their expertise of our system and all of the things that are coming into play with that, so this is adding on to cover those costs.
Thank you. Questions? Quick, call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9911-21.
Authorizing the city manager to contract with Comfort Systems USA for emergency replacement of an expansion tank for the municipal complex and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Mizek, second by Asbury. Mike?
Yes. This is in regards to an emergency repair that we have to make to the boiler system in the municipal complex here. I notified city council a few weeks back. Our boiler was dangerously overheating to the point where it then started flooding a basement area of City Hall. It was ultimately determined that this expansion tank had to be replaced. Those boilers were shut down for the period just to avoid any catastrophic damages.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9912-21.
Writing for the adoption of new matters in our codified ordinances of Bedford to approve, adopt, and enact the September 2021 replacement pages to our ordinances to repeal certain ordinances that would conflict with the updates in the law or deemed obsolete and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Fluharty, second by Spinks.
I'll take it, Mayor.
No, you're good.
Basically, you know, we need to update our ordinances, our city ordinances to mirror state ordinances, so we were required to amend them or repeal them if they conflict with state ordinances. So we do it on a regular basis. So this is, I don't know, I can't remember the last time we did one, but it was a couple months ago, probably, March. So this is going to catch us up for six months, just to update us and keep us current with the laws and the changes in the laws.
Thank you. Clear, call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
We have resolution 2574-21.
Which is an amending resolution number 256821, adopting an urban development plan for the redevelopment of Tinkers Creek and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Asbury, second by Saunders. Mike?
Yes, Mayor. For those of you that have been following, the city has been working to redevelop Tinkers Creek Commerce Park. There's roughly 29 acres in the industrial park that we are working with outside businesses and local businesses to expand and potentially relocate here. We're actually working very closely with the current owner, as well as Cuyahoga County, to facilitate this deal. There'll be a portion where the city will actually take ownership of this property for a short period, and then we'll be exploring and implementing TIFF legislation. There is a small, we are already put together this urban redevelopment plan. We're actually modifying it to add a small parcel that is on the backside that the county is adding to this. So we're not sure if that small parcel will be included in future TIFF legislation, but we need to amend this to be safe in case we do decide to include it. It is a very, very small piece of property. If we choose not to sell this parcel to one of the end-users, it can then go to the land reutilization corporation that we already have set up.
Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Now we have number G, the motion.
Sir, can we get a motion to accept the planning commission's decision approving Mr. Robert Burda's request for a variance to the city of Bedford, codified ordinance 1913-07O, which in part states that the total of all garages on a lot shall not exceed 1,100 square feet unless approved by the planning commission. He's requesting allotting a garage of 1,400 and 250 feet. Oh, wait, the planning commission, it's approved by the plant, lot size is 14,240 square foot. So they decided to allow him to build a bigger garage.
And also to remove 102 sheds.
Yes, sir.
So it's compliance with the square footage. Any questions?
Can we get a motion to that effect?
Motion by Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion H.
Item H is a motion to accept the planning commission's denial of life storage's request for conditional use approval for additional storage units on permanent parcels known as 1405 Broadway Avenue to construct two new self-storage facilities. This is, you know, this wasn't amended application, referred back to the planning commission after council wanted to give it further consideration, but the planning commission denied the request. So a motion is needed to either confirm or overturn the planning commission's decision.
A motion to accept, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. A reminder, if you vote yes, that means you agree with the planning commission denying it. Vote no, you can vote against them denying it.
Yes, sir.
Call the roll, please. Well, I'm sorry, Don.
Is this a denial of council's request, or is this a denial of the actual request to build?
It's a denial of the use. It's not that we didn't actually...
Because they asked it originally.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. No, that was denied.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, planning commission denied it originally when it came to city council. It then, the discussion went from the use to the type of building, and then it was asked that they go back and put together another kind of site layout. But this is merely requesting conditional use to expand the storage facility on these two parcels. And planning commission, again, denied that use.
And basically, for the reasons contained in their minutes, but because they didn't feel it was an appropriate location for additional storage facilities.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Okay, two more to go. Motion I, is a motion to accept, the planning commission was busy at the last meeting, but a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to accept Michael Holson's request of Apex Pinnacle Services representing Derek Thomas, the owner of 500 Broadway Avenue, proposing to install a new ACM aluminum composite material panel, 82 feet by 10 inches long by, and long by 4 feet 0 inches high, and then an entrance gate of 10 feet 7 inches by 9 feet 2 inches tall in the front of the building. And why, I'm not going to go into all the measurements, but for the Mitsubishi Motors Local on the south side of the building as part of the rebranding of the dealership of Mitsubishi Motors. So they basically were requesting a approval of, well, not a sign, is it, or a frontage of a sign that was bigger than normal. So they needed approval of the planning commission, basically.
And they're going to fix up the building?
Yes. Update the building for the new brand, the new image of the company.
Again, if you vote yes, you agree with the decision of the planning commission to accept it, and no, you don't accept it. Call the roll, please. Motion, I'm sorry, motion to accept by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Now we can call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
That's why Tracy sits so close to me. And finally, number G.
A last motion, a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to accept the Power Home Solar's application representing Kimberly Benz, owner of 19 Archer, request for a conditional use approval to install roof-mounted solar panels on the west side of the front of the house, which is not normally permitted, and the east rear of the dwelling, and the south side of the garage for a total of 17 panels. So planning commission decided to approve it, and I believe because of the unique character of the lot, and it would not be an inconvenience to the neighbors either.
Thank you. And again, yes, you agreed to accept. Call the roll, please. Motion? I'm listening to John Reed. By Asbury, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Thank you. Now it comes to the portion, hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
I'm Ace Lachowski, 745 Archer Road. I've got two questions. One involves our service workers, and there have been a number of times throughout the city when I've seen them on other very busy side streets, and a couple of times on the more major roads and the streets. And I know they're all wearing their fluorescent, very high-visibility shirts or vests, but one of the things that seems to have dropped away is that I'm not seeing any kind of signage at all for people who are approaching from a distance that there's service workers in the road. So it's, you know, you might have a very short street or very, coming around blind curves and turns, and you're not aware that people are working there. So I've just seen that with more frequency. So one out of, I'm thinking back to an incident that happened on Archer Road not far from my house where a service worker was killed. So that just kind of resonates with me that I'm seeing people who I'm concerned about their safety. So I just want to bring that up for attention. The other item would be at the bottom of Archer Road, at Solon, at the intersection there, there is an awful lot of brush and shrubbery looking in either direction, and there's not clear light of visibility when you're trying to turn out onto Solon Road. And also for people who are turning off of Solon Road onto Archer, you have a very hard time seeing traffic sitting there on those curves, especially if they're not, I'll see if they're inching out left or right, you can't really see them that well to your right in that intersection. So I'm just wondering about the ability to have service for people come around and trim those shrubbery there, because it's just so overgrown. And also you cannot even walk along the sidewalks along there, which is selfishly is part of my normal walking path, but it's not just me. And to your point, Sandy, about the trash and debris, it's way out of hand and out of control. So I appreciate your efforts there with the kids especially, but adults need to start it too, and I've seen that up in, down in your area, I've seen people walking around with their trash bags, picking up stuff. So that's a great thing to keep in mind for myself too. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Normally have a pickup truck following behind, but double check, make sure they are. You're right, that's a serious issue. Questions?
Hello. My name is Lucy. I live on Johnson Avenue. And a few weeks ago, I spoke to Mike, we spoke on the phone. We have issues with the trash, and so I'm kind of glad I came because I see that there's a lot of it. The bottles, I'm very familiar with those. We find them on our tree lawn constantly. We have problems with the kids, you know, the party house next door has been an issue for quite some time. We're losing our patience. We try to move over the summer, even though we put a lot of money into our house, but we're desperate and we kind of don't know what to do. And I feel like if we don't constantly call and nag, and the issues just kind of resolve in that moment, and then kind of just goes by and, you know, with time, it just goes back to normal. I came home today with the kids and we picked up two garbage bags full of trash. We just had a, we just had a birthday party for my son. So I mowed the lawn, mowed the tree lawns, did the leaves, all of it. Within two days, it was just garbage blown all over. We have kids that smoke pot constantly by midnight after my son's party was done. We had 10 cars of teenagers just lined all along the, you know, sidewalk. And because our house is a corner property, it's basically our property all along the side of the house and the driveway, and then the fence that continues. And so it's constant, teenagers hanging out. And I guess my issue is, we're trying desperately to get these parents involved. We don't ever see them. We don't, but my thing is, even if we call the police, these kids are not stupid. You know, they come and they assess, and they're like, well, please keep it down, you know, because there's a, there was a complaint of you guys being loud. My husband goes to work at 4:00 in the morning when we leave the windows open, the language, the music, the, it's just atrocious. And the other day, my neighbor, the neighbor across the street directly from the house was picking up the trash. And so I walked out and I said, wow, so today you're the pickup duty? You know, and he's a believer, and I understand all of it. But I feel like just because your attitude should be, well, let's, let's stand by example, they shouldn't coddle behaviors. And I feel like we're kind of just enabling it to happen because they just keep trashing and trashing and trashing, and we just keep picking up and picking up and picking up, and we're so tired of it. My kids are prisoners of their own home because they can't go play in the backyard because of the music and the language and that's constantly being used. And we are right there with send. I don't know what else to do. The street looked awful today when I got home. And it's, it's the smoking, then it's going to the food run, then it's eating, and then all the trash is in our front lawn, pops, cans, McDonald's, bottles of liquor. I mean, you name it, it's there. And it's constant, and it's not getting any better. When I spoke to Mike, you know, we talked about like the mowing the lawn. So a couple of weeks later, nothing happened. Finally, I called the city, and I'm like, okay, lawn's still not mowed. Well, it has not been mowed ever since. And I don't know who really mowed that lawn, even that time, but when it was addressed, somebody mowed the lawn. I don't know, we were gone, I didn't see who. But lawn is just, it's trash everywhere.
I believe we mowed it. That time that it was mowed, we mowed it, and that property's assessed. So the assessment's $200 after that, that time that we went out. We had to post it, we had to give so much notice, and if it's not done, then we have to go back and do it. I will check with that and check with the period again.
It's just, it's constant. Yeah, we're, we're just so tired of it. Yesterday, you know, my husband worked, and then he comes home, and there was a, their bike left in our driveway. He couldn't even pull in. So my husband put the bike on the tree lawn where we usually put the garbage out. And so I was driving to work at night, and I said, I called him, and I said, huh, there's a bike. And he says, yeah, I put it there because they left it in our driveway. I couldn't even, you know, pull up. And so in the morning when I got home, the bike was still there. And then one of the boys, you know, one of the boys that is from the house was packing to school, and he sees the bike, and it's just there. And I'm like, oh, well, like tonight, if it's still there, I'm leaving it there and I'm pulling garbage next to it, and if it's gone, it's gone. Like it's just, I'm so tired of babysitting everybody else and cleaning everybody, you know? I don't know. There's a lot of trespassing that's going on. There's, it's just, and everybody knows, this is the party house. We live next to the party house, and we're, and I mean, slowed down throughout the COVID, and now we're just coming back again. And so it was almost like, wow, this is great. Like this is what we moved here for, you know, peace and quiet. And it was almost like, oh, we got to break the pandemic because it was so nice, you know, we weren't bothered by it. And it's just when you have 15, 20 teenagers, and one of them lives there out of all these kids, and I wouldn't dare to go and approach and say, oh, can you guys please, you know, be quiet? I would not. I just don't feel that that's something, you know, and need to address, you know, possible pot smoking, possible drug taking, and I can't get a job without being drug tested. But we allow these kids to play on teams of two. They can't walk up to the store and get cigarettes, yet they're smoking, and everybody's aware, and we're being told by the police that the levels of marijuana, whatever it is in it cannot be tested, so legally they can't do anything. I find it really hard to believe that there's nothing that they can do if these kids are all underage. I just, I don't know. We're just, we feel very defeated. Very defeated.
Mike will get together with the chief and.
We'll talk about it again. Either you or I will be in touch.
Shouldn't have to put up with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lachowski, 197 Wondell. The trash is getting really bad on Broadway by North Coast Auto, and I pick it up all the time because I'm down to Bedford Diggles picking up the trash down there. Now, cars are getting crazy. They think it's a Speedway on Wondell, Southwick, Gold. They don't care. They flap them down the road, they're going to hurt somebody or kill the kid yet. Another thing, let's know what's going on with the old Dairy between the grass is about a foot tall over there, and where the old auto store's door was, it went out. On Broadway, the grass is about this tall. Next to the old Mr. G's, has been there all summer long, and nothing's been done with it.
Oh, in the sidewalk with the fences? Yeah, I know that grass is, that whole parking lot's going to get redone, and it was blocked off temporarily. The owner of Mr. G's acquired that whole parking area. It's not going to be a parking lot, he's ultimately going to turn it into green space, similar to what the people across the street did, with the park, like kind of benches for his staff. So all that's going to get cleaned up as far as that location. I believe the Wondell location was posted on Friday. If it was, I didn't see if it wasn't addressed, will be out there, and again, it'll be cited.
Yeah, Wondell.
Or assessed, I'm sorry.
Because I pick up trash down there all the time. I get a big bag of garbage out of it. But the speeding, I had shirt, I had a shirt made up for them. They didn't like my shirt. Thank you.
Take your word for that one.
Oh, my God, you're home. Just like this one right here. Best city in the United States, there's that with Ohio on the back.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I know, good to see you here.
Jim O'Neil, 155 Cool Avenue, 38-year resident. We're talking about leaf pickup. Mike, you don't want to talk about it. Been in your office a couple of times about this, okay? Now, you're talking about parking, okay? Don't park on the street. Last year, three weeks between stops on Cool Avenue. How are you going to control that? How do you, how do you know when to park and when not to park? Okay? I got up here a few years ago, suggested you guys look into contracting this out because your service department cannot do the job. Everybody's tree lawn gets destroyed, what leaves later for three weeks. Don't say what a great service department you got. Don't make it. I don't know how many trucks you got. Sell them, somebody figure it out, get some estimates from a contractor, get the job done. How many years does it go by? Get snow on piles of leaves, then they got to wait another two weeks for the snow to melt. I don't get it. Didn't somebody look into it? There's no schedule. You could say, well, we're going to be in this section on this day, and people could park, not park on the street. Or they, at least you do something, do it at night, do it somehow, but they just can't do it. So something to consider.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. Helen Wood, 395 Columbus Street. As I sat in one tonight watching this on YouTube, because I take care of my 85-year-old bud. Sandy, I don't give you kudos for picking up trash. That is stated at every single council meeting. Stop patting yourself on the back.
I'm not patting myself on the back.
You do. But that's what also comes out here. Sandy, I give you kudos for picking up garbage. 43 years my dad has lived on Columbus Street. 43 years we have picked up garbage. Can you pat me on the back?
Sure. Thank you for your good heart.
Thank you for that.
Sure, thank you. That makes you care about our city, like everybody that picks up trash.
But I don't sit at every council meeting and say it.
So I just try to encourage our kids and everybody else to do it too, to help out.
Why is it only this year?
I've been picking up trash council how long? For, I've lived here 14 years. I pick up more now because it's worse now than what it did. It's been.
It's always been the same.
No, I've been picking up trash for a long time.
It's always been the same.
No, it hasn't. It's got the food containers, the alcohol containers, it's got a lot worse during COVID.
I've got the same in my yard. I don't have a bar next door. I pick up cigar wrappers, I pick up kids' pop cans, I pick up everything that gets thrown out the windows.
Well, I'm just saying that.
I'm just saying, as a resident of this city, please put some time into the city instead of yourself. I mean, that is what got me up, put my dad down, and ran out the door.
Ma'am, do you live in Ward 1?
Ma'am, I live in the city of Bedford.
Well, I represent Ward 1 in the city, and I, all my residents in Ward 1 are out helping me.
This is a campaign speech, stop.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is, stop.
It's not.
Anyone else? Seeing none, could I have a motion for adjournment? Asbury, second by Saunders. Court, call the rule.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.